Good morning, everyone. It's 9:00 AM. I'd like to welcome everybody to the work session of July the 5th, 2022, of the Limestone County Commission. Under public comment, first we have Ms. Betty Ruth with RSVP. Do you mind stepping right up here, Ms. Betty Ruth?
No, I'll be happy to. I have a handout now that I'd like to give each one of you today, please.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Betty Ruth, Director of RSVP. And wanted to let you all know, next year RSVP will actually be 50 years old in Limestone County. We've been around for quite a while. And RSVP is a nonprofit organization. We provide opportunities to keep our persons 55 years of age and older active and involved in the community and doing volunteer work. We're strictly a volunteer program. And I suppose that you're wondering, well, why is she coming to us today asking for money? It does take money to operate a volunteer program. And wanted to let you know that we receive a federal grant each year. The federal grant is $140,000. And we have to match it with 30%. And 30% of our cost is usually between $60,000 and $70,000. And part of the allocation that US County Commissioners offer to us each year is used to help with the 30% match that is required to receive the federal grant. And wanted to let you know, one of our signature programs that we do as RSVP happens to be the Volunteer Income Tax Program. And I'm sure that all of you are familiar with the income tax program. We set up at the Public Library. We've been at the Public Library now for the third year. Don't fall out of your chair. And we have been at the Public Library, this is our third year. Before that, we were at First Methodist Church and, you know, before that, First Baptist. But we provide free volunteer, free volunteer opportunities for persons elderly and low income to come in and have their income tax return file at no cost to them. Last year, we assisted over 2,000 taxpayers. And that was an income that came back into the community of right around $2 million. So that is a very helpful program that our RSVP volunteers offer to the community. We are tutors in the schools, in both the city and the county schools as well. And we do other myriad opportunities of helping out in the community of where volunteers are needed. And we get a call for, you know, assistance from the volunteers. We have about 300 volunteers that are actively serving. And remember, you do have to be 55 years of age or older to sign up. And if you happen to know of a senior that happens to be sitting at home and you think they should be out and be involved, we ask you to give us a call. And we will make that contact with them to get them involved. Because that's the worst thing that can happen when a person retires or they're semi-retired, is to go home and sit at home. And we are requesting $8,000. And as I said, this will help us meet our 30% match. What we will do with the money is we would continue to operate a vehicle that provides transportation for some of the volunteers who do not have. We also have two events each year to recognize our volunteers for the service that they do. And that would help with those opportunities to recognize and just appreciation to our volunteers. So do any of you have any questions? And I've already gone over my time.
Well, that's fine. Does anybody have any questions, Ms. Betty Ruth?
I do not.
Appreciate the work y'all do.
We thank you.
Thank you kindly and sorry I went over. But when I get started talking, you know, it's hard to stop.
Well, I say this, you're passionate about that organization and we thank you.
I am. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And thank you, Ellen, for all working with me this year.
Ellen, do we have anybody else?
We do. Brian Lorge.
Mr. Brian, do you mind stepping up here, please, sir?
Good morning. I'm Brian Lorge, resident in District 1. I'd like to talk today briefly just about the Athens Limestone Animal Shelter. Last year, I drove just over 10,000 miles to help transport animals to rescues and find them good homes. I was told last year they took in about 4,000 animals. With the price of gas and other items going up, I think, I'm sure these numbers are increasing as people can't afford to keep their animals and rescues are taking less because people are not adopting animals. As I understand it, the lease at the current facility is expiring at the end of September. And the Limestone Veterinary Clinic is being sold with Dr. Pittman retiring. And so there'll be new management there. And the shelter is needing repairs. If you haven't stopped by there lately, I kind of encourage you to go by and just see kind of the condition of some of their facilities. Priscilla, Jocelyn, and April and the rest of the crew there do a heroic job in trying to provide care for the animals and find them homes. But honestly, I don't know how they keep up. And I'm just asking that we come together with some plan and move forward. I want to make sure we don't have a repeat of the recycling center. Is all right, the recycling center shut down. We can hold on to our recyclables until it gets reopened. We can't do that with the animals. That needs to stay in continuous operation. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you. Do we have anybody else?
No further comments.
All righty. Thank everybody for coming in and speaking today. All righty, so I guess moving on, first thing on the agenda for today, we'll have June 21st, 2022 minutes for the approval. Does anybody have any discussion with any of the minutes that was presented to us? Nothing to talk with there. Then we'll have claims, an amount of $2,414,241.23. Anybody got any dispute with claim that we'll have on the chat today? Moving on, unresolved orders. We'll approve a resolution for allocation of ARP funding to provide financial assistance to the mental health centers of North Central Alabama Incorporated for construction of a new mental health facility for children. And we've all discussed this, this is our ARP money. And this will be for helping out with the addition up here where they can separate the adult and children at the mental health center. Does anybody have any discussion with that? Y'all mighty quiet today.
What's the total project there?
Um, we-
Six hundred thousand, I think.
Yeah, I think around a million or a little better. Bill Giger from Mental Health would be the, would be the, um, he's working with, um, with, down at the IAC right now to get everything in order. I mean, it's, I think it's around a million, million one, whole project there, so. All righty, do we have a, anybody want to hear more discussion with that? All right, contracts, agreements, and grants. We approve to enter into a service agreement with Tri-Haz Solutions to provide disposal regarding of medical waste. And I think Commissioner Townsend is one of the ones that's-
Yeah.
-raised to this, let him speak on this if he needs to.
Yeah, it's, uh, we're actually finding a whole lot of needles and stuff on the side of the road, the Little Patrol is. So instead of us just putting it in the, in the landfill, I don't want to do that. So I've, Michelle actually come up with this and found this organization because the hospitals won't take it, nobody will take them. So they'll, they're offering us, for a small fee to take all these. And over about a year and a half, I've got several, like a whole container full, so.
And this is the same organization we deal with at the Sheriff's Office, right?
Uh-
I think so. I may be wrong on that. But anyways, anyways, I know that if any of y'all Little Patrol people have a, where y'all pick up any needles or anything on the side of the road, get with Commissioner Townsend, he can guide you in the right direction on this. Any more discussion with this? All right, next thing on here, budget revisions. We have several budget revisions. And as Emily could alleviate to that probably more than anybody. But as y'all know, fuel cost and energy cost has skyrocketed. I know Mr. Brian Lorge spoke on it a minute ago. You know, if we're going to provide a service, fuel cost is one of those things that we can't help but control of that. So, you know, it's budget revision here for the Sheriff's Office. I mean, for fuel cost, it's animal, I mean, it's every, every department's budget. You know, we budget, we try to budget a good number there. But we didn't prepare for $5 fuel cost. So there's several budget revisions here to revise to get us through to the end of the fiscal year for budget for fuel costs. Does anybody have any discussion or anybody got anything to add to this? All right. All right, and moving on, emergency purchases, we'll have none. Board appointments, we have none. Award of bids, we have none. Personnel action, got several on here, so we'll go through this. Approved to hire Mason Beagans as a temporary part-time grounds worker effective July the 5th of 2022. He, he worked with us through that co-op program through the school and has graduated high school and going to come back work temporary when he's going, so through the summer. Anybody got any discussion with Mason? All righty, next, moving on, approved to hire Wayne Adonomus. He's a temporary part-time facility worker. He's going to work down at the Cal Fort with Janey, helping mow grass and stuff. He is retired and looking for a part-time position. And I know we've, we've had that on the staffing plan for years and years to have a part-time person down there. And I want to thank Wayne, he retired from down at Majestic Metals. He worked down there running Majestic Metals for years. And so he just was looking for a little something to do, so he's going to help out down there. Anybody got any discussion with Wayne? No discussion with Wayne, we'll move on. Move to approve to transfer Aaron Tyler from Revenue Clerk to Appraisal Clerk in the Revenue Commission Office. Anybody got any discussion with Aaron? All right, approved to hire Elijah Reed Wally as a part-time deputy effective July the 5th of 2022, pending a drug screening. Anybody got any discussion with him? All right, number five, be to approve to promote Rachel Hale from an administrative clerk, grade nine, to a tag title clerk, grade 10, in the License Commission Office. Anybody got any discussion with Rachel? All right, number six will be to approve to promote Aldra Kilpatrick from tag and title clerk, grade 10, to a senior tag title clerk, grade 11, in the Commission, License Commission Office. Anybody got discussion with Aldra? All right, number seven will be to amend the staffing plan to reflect, to remove one administrative clerk, grade nine, and add one help desk clerk, grade nine, under the License Commission Office. Anybody got discussion with that? Which we've already kind of been doing that. It's just one of those things that we just changed in the staffing plan up a little bit. All right. All right, now here for discussion today, we've got to amend the staffing plan to add a recycling department. As we've all known, we've all beat this in the ground. And me and Commissioner Townsend has worked and worked and worked on this. You know, if we're going to move forward with the recycling program, we've got to get a person in place to help us move forward with it. And I've talked with Emily and, you know, we already budgeted 150-something thousand dollars a year to KALB for recycling. And we've got some little left over this year. So we could hire somebody to start to get us going in that direction. And, you know, I've told Commissioner Townsend, I mean, we can, us as commissioners, we can beat this in the ground. But I mean, we need somebody that knows how to do recycling stuff. So we're putting out here today to amend, which is a job description we'll be hearing in a second, but to, to add a person, to hire with that same amount of money. It's not going to be any more cost to the county. And maybe get some of the trailers back out and transferred to Decatur. Commissioner Townsend has reached out to Decatur and they have offered to take it for a fee. If we don't do something, all this is going to wind up in the landfill. So when it winds up in the landfill, your tipping fee is going to go up with Gatlin. So he's going to be in here wanting more money for that. So that's just a, this is a, just a baby steps to start, maybe some kind of a little, and then if all of this works out, and I, we have, we actually had a meeting with ADM the other day. And ADM has agreed to let us pick up where, what equipment that they still had on a grant, which that'll be for a later date. We, me and Drew wrote a letter to them and we told them it'd be after October before we could even think about that part of it. But that would be kind of the baby steps into the recycling program. And this is all up for discussion. I know that this is a, this is just for us to start some kind of a little program with that amount of money that we was giving every year and it, no more money really, so. Anybody got any discussion?
I do.
Go ahead.
I'm not for starting a new department at all. I mean, we're trying to, you know, make, make our money reach where we're trying to reach. Even though we got $150,000 or whatever, I think this will be larger than, than y'all maybe have realized. Also, we've had the small discussions. But I would like to see, instead of approving or amending the staffing plan to add a recycling department, I want to know what that staffing, what that recycling department is going to do. If, if we're down here on number 10, going to approve a job description for a recycling specialist, we're kind of putting the, the cart ahead of the horse. Maybe could we put this recycling specialist, instead of making a whole new department, which, you know, I'm, I'm not for increasing our size. Can we put that person under Allen Aldridge and put them where they could work under there until we can figure out what we're going to do about a department? Because when you start talking about departments, you start having to fund departments. You start having to let your department grow. Because if we hire this person, the recycling specialist, that specialist is not going to be able to ruin a recycling department. So we're going to have to have more employees than just that recycling specialist. Y'all agree with that? You think we'll have to have more employees than-
At some point, we may have to, yeah.
So the recycling department, how many employees will fall under the recycling department?
Well, as of right now, it would just be one.
It'd just be one, right now.
And then more or less, that person would answer to the county commission just like, you know, any of the other department heads. You just, that would be the, that's why we, you know, you had to have somewhere to have a budget line item for this situation. I mean, we could, we can, I mean, if y'all want to, that's fine. I don't have an issue with putting it under maintenance department. I don't hardly put it on engineering. That's not a, I mean, Mark said he perked his eyes up. But I mean, you know, I mean, it is a, you know, you just got to have somewhere to put the job description and the money, you know. That's, that's the only reason we started to, you know, and ultimately, we've done the mathematics on it and, you know, what it would take to take it down there and to get everything started.
But see, I don't have that. I don't, I don't have that information in front of me of how much it's going to cost, how, what, what Decatur is going to pay us, the, the maintenance on the vehicles. I mean, all of these different things. If I had that, I'm, I'm for the recycling department. I'm for the recycling specialists. I'm for picking up cans, I'm for cleaning America and all that good stuff. But I'm not for us just sitting here today and amending and making a recycling department without knowing the mathematics of it. I don't, y'all may want to do that, but I'm just telling you, this is something that in a year's time, it's, it's not going to get smaller, it's going to get bigger. And then in two years, it's not going to get smaller than it was that first year. It's going to get bigger. And the more people you continue to add to it, you have taken on a whole new department. I think I use the term "don't put on your plate" more than you can eat. And we may be putting more on our plate right here, just haphazardly, just without really knowing what's going on. Because y'all may know what's going on, but I, discussions I've had with y'all, I still don't have a breakdown. I mean, there's still not anything up here that breaks it down to what a recycling department is going to be, comparing it if Madison County's got one? Does Lauderdale County have one? Does Morgan County have one? Does anybody else have one that falls under the, their commission? So what other county has one that falls under-
Morgan County. We looked at Morgan County staff and how they do it.
See, I haven't seen it.
And some of the other ones are hauling theirs to Morgan.
I haven't gotten, I haven't, I haven't seen what it looks like. So I mean, this is kind of just-
Well, I know we, we took in about 150 tons of plastics, is what I was told from Kerry and them. So 150 tons is what they took in of plastics. If you did the math at $26 a ton, that's not a lot of money if we took it to Morgan County.
Yeah.
And that's what they took in in a year. And that's, that's the numbers that she gave me. Now, of course, COVID, you know, those numbers were all over, all over the page.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is, those numbers that you just gave me, right there, I want to see those on paper. I want to see how this department is going to ruin. I want to see how this department is going to fund itself or if we're going to make money. Y'all can give me figures all day long. You can give me what Ray Long and them do in Morgan County. But this is not something we need to just, hey, we're going to make a new department and hey, we're going to hire somebody to run that department. I don't even know what the department is going to do.
Well, there's a lot of unanswered questions, I think, here.
There's a lot of, the unanswered question is, we really don't know a whole lot about any of this. Because, you know, but we got to start somewhere.
As I under-
The citizens of Limestone County want something. They want some type of recycling.
I agree with that.
And we're going to have to work our way through this slowly.
The way I understand it, this will put us about like it was when keep-
As far as plastic-
Limestone Beautiful was doing it. This person will take, put the trailers out, will take them to Decatur and pay them a fee. And we're essentially the same as we were.
I want to think of a difference.
The service you provided.
The service that we're providing.
With except, with the exception-
With less money.
With the exception of the cardboard side of it. But the cardboard side of it is, is maybe after October. You know, and the reason, and, and I don't, I mean, as far as the, as far as a, you know, to add a recycling department, that really is not as big a deal. But you got to have somewhere to hire a person.
Yes.
And I mean, what I wanted, and I think everybody, we've all beat our heads together. We've all, I mean, this is what it's about to have a discussion. I mean, and everybody's got a different opinion, I'm sure. But you know, the discussion is, you know, that we've beaten this thing and beaten it, beaten it, beaten it. If we, you know, if we just, if we hire, I mean, we can hire, we can approve to hire a recycling specialist and put them under any department. That really doesn't matter. We don't have to have a peer department. But you got to have somewhere to go with the line item and the money, you know, that we were already spending-
Right.
-to go to this. And you know, my thoughts is, if we hire somebody who has some recycling experience.
So we got somebody that's got recycling experience?
Well, we've got a job description applied. I mean, you know what I mean, if, and you know, we might not even get applicants, you know. I mean, well, sometimes, you know, we, sometimes you take applicants for jobs, you don't get nobody that even fits the applicant, you know, I mean.
Right.
I mean, so, you know, what my thoughts is, is we hire somebody who tells us what recycling, helps us plan a recycling program. That's my, I mean, you know, I mean, it's-
Yeah, that's fine. You know, we've always worked with the city on it. I mean, what's the city's input on it? Has anybody talked to the city?
Well, I mean, the city has their, they, they transfer theirs to Decatur, just like we do.
They transfer-
They pick up curbside recycling and they haul it to Decatur.
Solid Waste Authority, have they not, I mean, can we not work together with the city and, and put this thing together?
Solid Waste Authority is not involved in recycling.
Has nothing to do with the recycling.
They're not involved in recycling, so.
None at all.
So the city, the city manages their program themselves. And so that, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna be involved in it, then it would be something that the county would have to manage.
It'd have to be a joint venture or deal with them.
Well, I know we've always worked with them and I just-
Well, I call Madison County. And Madison County, what they do with the majority of their recycling is they incinerate it. And they incinerate it at Reston Arsenal because they have to have so much tonnage go through there to be incinerated at Reston Arsenal.
And sell the steam.
Yes. And they have to do that because they can't get rid of their recycling. So if we take this on, and let's say just a normal day, we can't get rid of our plastics, nobody's going to take our plastics. Or let's say something happens and the cardboard doesn't take it. Let's say we have a pandemic. And we're still going to have these people wanting us to get it. Now, at this point, two years ago, this wasn't on our plate. This was, we had a group that was doing it, a group that was handling it. Now this becomes a department. This is kind of like garbage being picked up. When it becomes a department, it's a department that we have to fund and we have to supply employees. And that's my only concern, is not that we don't do the recycling because recycling's got to be doing. But the first time I'd really discussed or had any, any dealings with any of this, where we would discuss was, was two weeks ago. And I, that was kind of choo, 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 and it was done. I want to see the recycling department break down. Not just this specialist paper right here where, where we got a job description. And, and I mean, don't, I, I think we need to discuss what the job grade was going to be. I mean, that's a 17. I mean, that's, that's-
Same thing as a crew foreman, that's what it is.
Same thing as a foreman.
A foreman over a district.
I thought a foreman was 19.
Mm-mm, 17, isn't it? I had to look at the staffing plan. We look back at it, I think it was 17, I believe.
So this person will essentially, as far as the scale goes, become one of the top 10 highest-paid employees we got in the county.
I get my glasses on.
And I mean, we haven't even got a department yet. And we're approving somebody to make, to have that kind of salary, I mean.
No, a foreman is a 19. A district foreman, a supervisor is a 19.
Yep, so it's a 17.
It is a 19.
So what's this, what is the 17?
It's the same as a HVAC specialist or something like that.
Or a equipment operator.
Or equipment operator.
Three.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
So I've got, okay.
Yeah, sergeant at jail, several, so we got several 17s.
So where did we get this? What does, what does Morgan County pay their recycling specialist?
We went back and theirs was about, theirs would have been equal to a 17 to a 19. And we sit down with, with Brittany and went over a job script, looked over and over their job description and went from there.
Well, I may be the only one that has a problem with it. So it won't make any difference when it comes down to the budget.
I don't know. Little table issue.
Well, I mean, that's up to y'all. I mean, that's, I mean, it's totally up to y'all. That's why we put it out here for discussion. I mean, we got a-
I would feel very, much more comfortable if it was tabled. If it was able to where we could get more than, than, than what we got. And, and I know we can't sit around and discuss it and talk about it amongst our sales. But we, we can have some more paperwork to back up what a recycling department is because it's, I, I don't feel comfortable with it. I'm just letting y'all know that, I mean, we just had him stand up and tell us that evidently, you know, I, I think I've been discussing this for about six months or at least since the last time we had a budget hearing that we're going to do something about animal services, y'all better be getting on it. Like I said that in January.
Remember.
We ain't got to own it. And it's, it's just around the corner and this one might be fixing to shut down. And just if y'all don't know, for the last 16 years, nobody else has ever bid for it. So you better get on it. So let's, don't jump on this bandwagon to this recycling department just yet and sink all our teeth into it because y'all may be having to store kittens and dogs somewhere real soon. So, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not for, I'm not for that either. So let's, let's make sure we got all our ducks in a row or all our squirrels in the cage or however you might want to put it. But let's, don't bite off more than we can chew right now because we don't know what's, what's next. If, I've had a handful of people call me about the recycling department. But I've had a whole lot more people call me about picking up debris and stuff on the side of the roads. Guess what? Call Madison County. They wish they'd never done that either because it cost them about $30,000 a month. So the trucks now are $295,000 a piece, where the trucks used to be $165,000 a piece. So when we have this recycling department, I know they got a couple of trucks and some trailers. But are we eventually going to have to buy some new trucks and maybe some new trailers? Or are we going to have to buy a piece of property and put the recycling department on it? I mean, I just, y'all just decide what you want to do. I'm just letting you know where I am. And right now, at this point, I would not be for a recycling department. And I wouldn't be for approving a recycling specialist. That's just, that's just where I am. And it's nothing personal, it ain't got nothing to do with recycling, it's just-
Business.
This is just something I really think we need to, we need to chew a little bit.
Well, that's totally up to y'all. I mean, we have, like I said, we've beat it out and everybody wanted a plan. So we, we've come up with a plan. So it's totally, I mean, you know, we can neither move forward or we can, we can, we can put it down. I mean, but I mean, I have, you know, people have reached out to me and reached out, reached out, reached out. And I mean, we have, you know, the only plan that I see us even moving forward is with the same amount of money that we have already been allocating to try to, you know, and like I say, we own all these trailers sitting up there. We own the vehicle sitting there. So I mean, it was a, you know, you know, do we, you know, it's up to y'all. I mean, I, I mean, it's-
We say a hundred fifty thousand dollars is what you said right here, okay? With, uh, I, I don't, the job, the grade seventeen here that we got.
Twenty, it starts out at twenty-one or two dollars.
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
After we pay their insurance and after we pay retirement and all that kind of stuff, what kind of figures do we come up with that on that one employee?
Probably sixty, sixty grand, sixty, seventy grand.
So let's say seventy grand, so we subtract that from a hundred fifty thousand dollars, and we're gonna be able to run a department with that. We don't build a pay, we, we're already reapproving fuel here that's going through the roof. So if we say pay that person seventy thousand dollars and we go, so that's eighty thousand dollars we're gonna have for her to drive back and forth to Decatur for three hundred sixty-five days out of the year with fuel and maintenance and everything else. I just don't see that it's gonna be the same money.
Well, I think the cardboard is a profit-making deal.
Yeah, they.
It's a separate, e- exactly.
Today it is.
Made out tomorrow.
Yeah, it might be tomorrow. So, I mean, I know if you go down Elm Street out here, there's a building out there. They did plastic recycling out there next to, before you get to Elkton Road. And there is a whole couple of acres out there full of plastic and big huge bales. And guess why it's sitting there? They can't give it away. And that's a business. You, you've never seen that?
I've seen it, but I don't know what they're, if they're, I mean, I don't know how, why it's sitting.
Yeah, I asked. They, it's, it's just more than they, they bit off more than they can chew.
Blown it into Rama, they, they're, they, they, they deal with it every, they make pellets out of it.
Yeah, they make pellets. I don't know why.
They actually go back into the process.
But I'm just saying, let's, uh, I'm, I'm for recycling before anybody gets on the, Jason Black and says he's against recycling. I'm all for it. Uh, I remember, I told y'all the last time, I remember Sparky, when Sparky first came out recycling, I was in elementary school, and we picked, we didn't have aluminum cans, but we did the paper and the plastic. And then aluminum came around. So just, just know that when you create a department, that department has to be funded. We did that with Parks and Recreation a few years back, and we had to fund Parks and Rec, fund Parks and Rec, fund Parks and Rec. Well, guess what we did last year? We killed Parks and Rec and we moved it over to Allen Aldridge and then with maintenance. Because you can't pay for it and you can't staff it. So we just, we just approved to hire a guy that's gonna be a part-time person down there. Well, that would have been under Parks and Rec had we not just dropped that name, so there's another employee to Parks and Rec. So I, I just, I hate to sound belligerent about it, but y'all just, I'm, I'm gonna leave it right there because.
Well, I mean, I'm fine with that. That's why we're here today to discuss it. I mean, that's what we're all here for. I mean, I mean, we are.
We haven't got those calls yet of the people that think this is a bad idea.
Well, like I said, I mean, this is what we're here for, and this is, um.
Yeah, I've got more that's in favor for. I've not got any that says it's bad.
Well, you wait till this gets on the front page of the paper and you'll see.
Well, I mean, and then here, I mean, like I said, we're here to try to be the, you know, I mean, this is a service that has been provided in this county, and people are, you know, we've already been funding it. So I mean, it was, I mean, that was, I've, people have beat me up trying to figure out a solution.
So how many schools do we have in the county? Twelve?
Thirteen, totally.
Thirteen? So there's thirteen trailers, because if each school calls and they say they want a trailer, we got twenty-two trailers, right? We're gonna provide each one of them. That's thirteen trailers. And we're gonna have said person be the only employee to haul all those thirteen trailers to Decatur.
You know, my thoughts is, and this is where I've kind of gotten to with it, and this is what, this is, this is what me and, me and Commissioner Townsend has, you know, we, you know, he's been passionate about this program, and we've looked at it, and we've come up with every, we've looked at where to put a cardboard baler. We've looked at this, we've looked at that. And of course, naturally, you know, it takes, when you go to that, it does take more.
Yeah.
And, um, but you know, I mean, I told him, I said, my thoughts is let's start small. It started small. And if it don't never become no, and here's the deal with the trailers. My thoughts is, is find locations for about four places in each part, each district, and just kind of say, hey, we got a, we've got a, here's a place, and you know, we're gonna, and you know, we got enough trailers, we can just drop and pick up, take one to Decatur and unload it. And you know, that would be a one-person show for, for quite a while, and then if it grows into more, it grows into more. If it doesn't, you know, I mean, and here's the deal. I mean, if it's, if we can figure out, you know, if the cardboard is a revenue stream and it, that does come into fruition, then you have a revenue stream in there. But if you don't, I mean, you know, we had talked about, you know, putting the cardboard baler at the jail to let the, you know, we've talked about that. And I mean, that's been, it's, this is a, this is a process we've talked about ever since a recycling center has went to pass. And I mean, I have, I mean, we've worked, I mean, I've looked and looked, and I've looked at options, and I mean, this is the best option I can come up with today.
Now, I do.
Y'all can come up with something better. I mean, I'm willing to.
Call. I do have, you know, we, we do have the meeting.
Yeah, and we do have a meeting. We, I mean, you know, but here.
A company out of California.
But even at that, we still need somebody to work with them. I mean, my thoughts is.
Well, let me, let me, let me ask you this. Why don't we know about there's gonna be a meeting with somebody from California?
Because we all can meet.
Well, we're not meeting, but we're discussing it right now. You should have told me a week ago, two weeks ago.
I did tell you that we haven't.
With a guy from California?
Replenished.
Negative. No, you didn't. So that's what I'm saying, y'all. It's everything. I've, I've got the two of y'all working on it, but I'm not getting all the information. I mean, I, I, I guess we'll just vote on it today and, and we'll, we'll just see where it goes from there. But I mean, everybody's got to, when we met two weeks ago all in here, we all could have discussed the California guy.
Well, I tell you what.
We all five sit right here in this room and we met.
Well, we was talking about equipment then, from K L B. We wasn't talking about anything else.
Okay, all right.
My deal is, here, here we go. I tell y'all what do, um, I mean, I'm, 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 I'm fine with it either way. And if y'all are agreement with this, this is fine with me. We've got two weeks to the next meeting. Do y'all want to think y'all can come up with a better solution?
Mm-mm. I, I, that, I don't think I can come up with a better solution, but I can come up with the idea that y'all can at least describe what the recycling department's gonna do, what this guy that evidently I, I don't know about from California is gonna do.
I had, me and Carrie had a virtual meeting.
Who?
Carrie.
Who's Carrie?
She's over the recycling right now, just so we could get an idea of what this guy, what this company.
That was the girl that sat in here with us in the meeting the other day.
Just so we could kind of get an idea of what this guy's offering. So he.
You think Carrie's gonna apply for the recycling specialist job?
I have no idea. That will be up to her.
Well, I tell you what do, let's just, y'all wanna just come back in two weeks with it? I mean, I'm fine with it.
I think that makes me either way.
And I mean, I, you know, I mean, you're more than welcome to, you know, to help us out any way you can. I mean, that's what we're here for.
I'll do whatever, I'll do whatever I need to do, but we, but we all need to be on the same page.
And, um, I've sat down with Emily and talked about this for two, three weeks now, maybe a month or so. I mean, of what we would do forward and, you know, discuss budgets and with the money we had, and I mean, it was, you know, I mean, it was a way for us to stay in some form of a business without any more money. And that was where I, that's where, and, and, you know, I, I mean, I didn't think it would be a major conflict, but I mean, if it is, that's fine too. I don't wanna, I don't wanna put anybody in a position that they don't feel comfortable. I mean, that's what we're here for. I mean, anyway, I know, I I know we don't all have to agree on everything. We're not supposed to, but I mean, and it's a.
It's been three to one before and two to two, and people split the vote and all that, but I'm just telling you, we better study this just a little bit, we better study it just a little bit more, and we better take a little bit of time.
Let's just get some figures.
Yes. This is just kind of all really fast.
And that's why I mean, you gotta, you gotta have a meeting here to have a discussion, to have a figure. So there we go.
Exactly. Exactly.
I mean.
It's just like budget and everything else. We can all go sit in one at a time with Emily and Ellen and discuss this. We don't all have to be sitting together and discuss it. I mean, everything we, we, we vote on, we've, we've somehow done background information on it. This is the only thing that I had, that he had. I don't know if, Danny, have you been able to do a whole lot with recycling?
I kind of understand what we're, what we're doing.
I do too, but I'm just looking at, you know, if we're gonna say we, we're for smaller government and we making another department, that's not smaller government. That's increasing the size of government.
We all want it.
I, yeah.
Just like the animal control. That's an issue we're gonna have to deal with too. I mean, it's all gotta be brought out. Let's get our ducks in a row and get our figures right, and get everybody on the same page.
Yes, please.
I think.
Well, that's fine. I mean, and I mean, like I said, this is a, this is the, this is why we're here to discuss it. I mean, this, no, I mean, I'm not trying to.
We just don't need to get into it too fast.
Okay.
It's the first real time we've been in a meeting that we've been able to discuss it.
Well, then that's fine. I mean, that's why.
To make a department.
Well, like I said, as far as the department side of it, we don't have to make a recycling department. You know, I just figured that was the easiest way for us to, to keep the money separated. Don't it just like, it's like at the sheriff's office. We have ten, we, I mean, we have several budgets there. You have the animal control budget, you have the jail budget, you have the, you know, the sheriff's budget. You have every, I mean, in every department you have, you know, you have different, you know, you have different departments, you know, for that reason. So I mean, that was a, this was just a way to keep the money separated. And if, if it ever did get into where it was a generator of revenue, you had a place to go with it, you know?
And if it doesn't work out, we can, we can do away with it.
You said it yourself. We killed the Parks and Rec program.
We were just trying to get some start. You gotta start, you gotta start somewhere.
And if it, if it, if it, if it, here's my deal. I must, I mean, we can put our jobs and hire you on the bottom down. We're still, it's the taxpayers' money. It's no difference than any other appropriation you do.
That's right.
I mean, you're talking animal controls, no difference in that business.
So is this hundred fifty thousand dollar solid waste money?
Yes, that's what we.
So it's solid waste money?
It's not. It can't be used on any.
But we can't use solid waste money for recycling, right?
No, we do.
We do.
Do.
We do.
We do, yes. You can eat and. So I mean, and it's a, well, I tell you what do, I mean, out of, I mean, out of respect for everybody here, and I mean, this is why we're here for the, we will knock number eight and number ten off until the next meeting, and then if y'all wanna, I mean, I'm fine with that. And I mean, that's, that's fine with me. I mean, that's.
I, I mean, if, if y'all are all on the same page and I, and I, I man out, I'm sorry, but I just don't.
We want everybody to be comfortable.
And I want everybody to be comfortable. I mean, that's.
We're good.
Well, we're fine. I mean, it's not, I mean.
There's some things I think we need to do and make sure we got A, B, C, D done. Cause I don't want E to pop up.
And like I said, this is, I mean, in, you know, Commissioner Townsend, if you wanna work, we'll, we'll get, we'll get all the figures together and.
Yep, we can get them.
I mean, have it all by the next meeting, and we'll go from there. And I mean, like I said, this is what it's here for. It's a, we're here to discuss the issues we have amongst county.
Thank you. Thank you. I mean, really.
And I mean, like I said, I mean, that's what we're here for. That's why we brought it up today. You know, I mean, this is up for, this is for the setting agenda for the meeting.
Well, this is, I'm, I'm gonna be gone in November, and this is something that y'all, at least y'all have to deal with for the next four years or two years, whatever it is. And I want you to really, really think about it, because I just, I just, I just know there's so many things that can go wrong and go bad, and I just.
Well, my deal is, like everything else, it was a hundred and fifty thou, I believe a hundred fifty-six is the total number. I had to look at things. You know, my deal is, that's the amount of money we were already putting toward a recycling program in Limestone County.
Yep.
So my thoughts is, we take that same amount. It's October. You know, I mean, here we are, we're having budget hearings today and the next commission meeting. So if we are gonna have a recycling program in the county next meeting, we're gonna have to have a way to create a budget. So I mean, that was, that was my thoughts for the, for the department, you know?
Y'all good with two weeks? Y'all promise?
I'm good. I mean, I'm fine.
You good with waiting two weeks?
Hey, like I said, I mean, I'm, I mean, I'm.
Well, me and Colin has talked about this. We were very slow about getting into this. We just.
I mean, this has been a month and month, month process of I've sat down and racked my brain and, you know, tried to come up, and I mean, I had to throw y'all a solution out here. You know, I mean, it's, here's, here's what I came up with, and here's what me and Town.
And this may be the solution we do in two weeks, but let's just.
And like I said, I mean, it's not a, I mean, it, I mean, we've been this long without recycling. It's not gonna wait another two weeks anyways.
Yeah.
But, uh, you like my glasses?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, I like the glasses.
I had to borrow from a lady over in the, um, in the office over here next door, because I left my glasses at the office.
Okay, so, thank y'all.
And that's fine. I mean, like I said, that's what we're here for. And I mean, is, and like I said, you, if you, and if you have any input, I mean, ask.
Please.
Please tell us. I mean, that's what we're here for, is to tell us. And, and like I said, if you have any questions financially, I mean, Emily's our CFO, and I mean, I went over it with her, and I mean, we always take her advice on money anyways, so that was kind of the, you know, I mean, I respected, you know, when I went to her and she was fine with it, and that's why I didn't want to get anywhere out of it.
Well, she's usually right. Usually, usually.
Ninety-nine point nine 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 percent of the time, she don't never leave me astray, so.
Yeah.
And I ain't never found that one tenth of a percent yet she hadn't done it. So she's always done an awesome job. So. Anyway, so moving forward, we take number eight and number ten off, which was dealing with the recycling department, and we will bring that back next commission meeting.
Got it.
And, um, and if you have any, Jason, if you have any input or any question, any, any, I mean, feel free. I mean, that's what we're here for. That's why we, we're trying to come up with a solution for the county, and we're just trying to come up with it before budget time.
I may just get in trouble, we're done right around.
Well, that's good.
Hmm.
I mean, yeah. But like I said, we're moving forward. We'll have those two struck off, so, um, one between them there, I don't know how it wound up between it, but it did. And it'd be approved, the job description for the help desk clerk in the license commission office, and this is in Justice Office. This is where we talked about earlier in there, so. Any discussion with that? And then number eleven would be to transfer, to approve to transfer Shelley Posey from Corrections Officer to Corrections Corporal effective July the fifth of twenty twenty-two. Does anybody have any discussion with Shelley? All right, number twelve, be to approve to transfer Jimmy Flint to a part-time school resource officer to a part-time courthouse security effective July the fifth of twenty twenty-two. Anybody got any discussion with him? And number thirteen to be to approve to transfer Christian Frazier from deputy assigned to investigations to investigator, and this will be effective July the fifth of twenty twenty-two. Anybody got any discussion with that? And then to be to approve to hire, um, on your Guinness, and I guess is how you say that. I don't know everybody. I'm sorry with names there, so. As a corrections officer effective July the fifth of twenty twenty-two pending a drug screening. Does anybody have any discussion with this person? All right, merit increases. We have three listed below. Anybody got any discussion with the bounty of merit increase? And this point, engineer, Mark, we'll let you talk for a little while.
All right, yeah.
Thanks, sir.
I will, I will try to make this short. I know we're running out of time, getting pushed up against our next meeting. Um, but we have two subdivisions for your consideration today. Uh, Jones Springs subdivision phase two. This is a major for final approval, uh, creating thirty-two lots in District Two. This is uh, north of the Pepper Road intersection with Jones Road, and it's on the west side of Jones Road there. And then we have Southern Gales Estates. This is a major. This is for preliminary approval, creating thirty-three lots in District One. This is south side of Bain Road, approximately one half mile west of Mooresville Road. So, um, this is right in around the, the golf course there. Um, so that's what I have for your consideration today. Um, I did, I was gonna just kind of throw something else out there. Running out of time, so, but, um, I've got part of my budget request. I think I've kind of touched base with all you guys about, um, about trying to add another engineer to do, you know, to kind of take on some of this growth, given the number of subdivisions and everything we have. In that budget request, um, I, I've, I've got the position on the staffing plan currently. And, um, so I'm, I'm maybe touching base about trying to go ahead and advertise for that, but, uh, like I said, I'm, that's, that's not currently in my budget, so it would be a, it'd be a budget amendment to be able to hire that person, but just kind of throwing that out to give you guys something to think about. I know you can't act on it today, but I was just, just while all, everybody was together, just trying to get that out there.
You trying to get it in on the next budget year?
On the next budget, I'm gonna be asking.
You are gonna be adding it on the, on the, so look for it.
Yeah. So, like I said, while we're all sitting here in a position where we can talk, I was just gonna, kinda, kinda let you guys know what, what my thoughts were on that. Um, and then, uh, I know that we've had a lot going on with the paving crew. We're finishing up seven mile post, uh, this week. Um, I, I'm, I think Wells Road's where we're gonna have ready to go to next. Um, and so we'll be over there, uh, next week doing some patching and, and a leveling layer on it. But we've got, regularly, we find ourselves in a situation where we've got a lot of major projects that we're working on. Um, and I know everybody's got a lot of patching, that, patching spots, a pipe here, there that needs to be done. Um.
Have we gotten our pipes in? Have y'all got any of the new metal pipes?
We had.
When do you think they'll?
They were, when we ordered them, they were six to eight weeks out, I think, is what they had said. So we're, it's, it's kind of, I mean, that was a whole lot quicker than we could get anything else.
Oh, yeah.
But, um, so, like I said, I know that, that there's patching here and there over a few pipes and things like that. Um, y'all think about how you want us to approach it. I mean, we're, we're in a spot where we're, um, we're working towards trying to, um, trying to get these projects done, because it's hard getting the contractor to come in and do the work. So we've got a crew that can do contractor level work. So I keep loading them up, getting mainline work done. But that kind of, on the back end, we struggle with getting the, the, the minor patches and things like that done. They keep getting kicked off till winter time, and then, and, and I know that's not necessarily feasible in a lot of situations for you guys. Y'all put some thought into how we want to approach, um, how we want to approach that. We do have that second paver up there. I don't know if anybody wants, if any of your crew are interested in learning how to do some of those small things, if, if each one of you wants to get a guy trained, and y'all can, I, I don't know. I, there were, we've got, we do have the paver, we have the extra roller, um, they're backups for us to make sure that we can do the job we need done. Um, but I know that you guys at times get put in a situation where you've got this spot, you keep running out and either cold patching, or you keep running out and, and trying to put crush a run on, because you're waiting on us to get to it, and it seems like, it seems like that just keep, those lists keep building up, because we're doing these ma, more major projects, mainline paving. And so I just want you to kind of think about how you'd like us to approach it. If that means you want us to concentrate on the, the patching and put more on the contractor, I mean, that's an option too. I'm just, um, but we all know how relying on contractor works. That's the reason we've made the investments we have in the paving program that we have today, so.
What about the paps we got on site? Like, I've got a bunch of pipe that I'm, I don't, I'm not using right now, but if he's waiting on a thirty-six inch arch, and I've got it on my.
You've got one on site, we transferred.
Why don't we get a piece of paper? Let's, let's write down what we've all got, because you may be able to use what I've got, or any of y'all, or I might be able to use what y'all've got. And let's get some of this done before we get our other stuff in, so I, I'll let y'all know what I've got, and that way you might know, because I know Holt Springer Road right now, I need a lot.
I can, I, I can get Todd to try to put together an inventory.
That's good. If he'll come out.
Pipe for what everybody's got on their yards. Um, that way we can at least have a little bit of an inventory of pipe, and everybody can know what, what's out there.
I mean, you may be at Daryl's next week, and he, well, you can finish him up, but he needs a pipe. Well, I'll give it, you know, we'll transfer it over to you.
I know we over our last order that we actually got from Foley. We had several roads, I mean, a lot of what's sitting on the yards already committed.
Committed to, mine is too, but.
So I know, I'm sure it is, yeah. Yeah, sure.
And I mean, we can make a note. I mean, if you've got something committed, I mean, if we've got a good inventory of what everybody has.
Yeah.
If you've got something committed, we'll make a note, and we can, that way everybody knows what it is. But I get a starting point. Kind of same type thought process that I'm trying to come up with on how we can get these little patching things done, is how do we, how do we work together to, to, to accomplish that? So. how do we work together to, to, to accomplish that, so. Like I said, I'd just like to kinda put your, um, to kinda think about it and, and think what, what we can do, how we can utilize the resources we have, cause, I, I don't have a problem if, if, if it's more important for us to worry about the patching and let's just, let's just rely on the contractor on a, a project or two. If that's the direction we need to go, that's fine. Um, I just need some direction, cause like I said, I, I'm, I, I, I kind of gear up towards, hey, we've got the, ability, we've got the equipment. Why are we waiting on a contractor to do this mainline paving when we can go do it? That, that's kinda my direction, so y'all can rein me in and tell me at any point, hey, we need to, we need to concentrate on this patching for a little while. That's okay. I just want y'all to know that, that, that I, I kinda, go full ahead trying to get these main projects done, so, um, but I just, but I am cognizant that our patching, seems to get kicked off to the end, and so, getting some direction from you guys on, on how you'd like to see us, us work, is, is beneficial to me.
Well, Mark and I talked about it the other day, and I know I've got, people on my crew that can, I can put a pa, a paving crew together just out of my crew if I needed to. Danny's got a good man, you know, and, and the strip patching's what kills us. You know, we haven't used it old coal mix. We don't like using it. None of us like using it.
It puts out a lot of gravel too. You got a lot of excess gravel that we happen to deal with.
Yeah.
You took, I mean, you talked about that the other day.
Oh, yeah. But uh, but anyway, I, I think it'd be to our advantage, if everybody could agree, you know, and I wouldn't mind, our men wouldn't mind working in the other districts. You know, we, we've always been good to swap out and gonna stay good about it.
It may be run to District Three and do twenty-five tons today and, and tomorrow go to District One and do twenty-five tons, but I mean, you, you do that, you do that a couple of times and it just catches, catch, it keeps everybody caught up, instead of us, waiting to the end and y'all having to use crush or run to keep things just held together, or coal mix and keep things held together. I just, like I said, I, I just need some direction.
The milling would be a problem, wouldn't it? You, we still got to have you to do the milling.
Well, I mean, there, there's, like I said, there's some things we can do, but um, I just need some direction. I can, I can put together a plan if I know what y'all are willing to.
How much will that milling machine on a skid steer do?
It, for a small patch, a twenty-five ton patch, it's, it's more than basic. That's when we bought that milling head, that's what we did, our milling, uh, for the small patches. That's what we did with it, so.
Just for your kids?
Just to keep in, pull over. It's more than basic.
Short stretches.
Well, like I said, we can all get together and talk about that.
I know we're coming up on, I know we're running out of break time.
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna move on if y'all don't mind. Um, other business, we have to sell one freight liner out of District Three. I guess that's the old blue low boys, is that right?
It is.
Well, I don't know if it was,
And I thought, I really look and see where the money's supposed to go, but I think me and District Two purchased that truck together. I don't know if we ended up splitting it up with all four of us, did I?
I don't think so. I think it's on your inventory.
Okay.
Um, so I don't know how that took place. I just, I do think it's on your inventory, which is why it's showing here.
Okay, that's fine.
So, we'll have,
Wherever the money goes, we'll,
Right.
Chair the whale.
There you go.
All of twenty thousand.
All of, all of fifteen hundred dollars were going to shit.
We might pave a few roads with that.
Start a recycling department with it.
All right. All right, now, um, we got it. We'll, we'll have an executive session following the commission meeting, Dan. I have one question for Drew right quick. The executive session is ahead of the um, public comment, I mean, report of officers, and I know in the past we have done this, with, with Mark's here, we go ahead and went ahead and done the report of officers, then we done the, because this word has to fall on the, so when we get to that point today, that way y'all can, I know we're running short of time here, so that way y'all can have a report of officers after, before we do the executive session.
Got it.
And because when we come out, cause when we come out of the executive session, all we'll simply do is adjourn. We will take no action afterwards, and it'll be no action to take an executive session. We'll just come out and adjourn, so. I just wanted to clear that up, because I know y'all may have something to talk about, so um, report of officers, Commissioner Savage, you got anything right quick?
I don't have anything.
Mr. Marshall.
I don't have anything.
Commissioner, no thank you. Commissioner Townsend?
I ain't got anything.
And I'll just hold mine. That way if everybody's gonna go to the restroom, we got five minutes here. We'll be back in five minutes right here. Thank y'all.